Also move to excuse Mr. Chio.
Second.
Thank you.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I want to say roll first.
Forgive me. Let's go with the roll call first. Sorry, Terry.
Steve Workman.
Here.
Dennis Miller.
Here.
Angela Woodward.
Here.
Dan Lawson.
Here.
All right. Off your game today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening and welcome everyone to the November 4th meeting of the Ashland City Council. Welcome everyone to our viewers at home, members of our audience, members of council. Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Welcome everyone. First item on the agenda this evening will be the approval of the minutes from the October 21st meeting. If there are no additions, deletions, or corrections to those minutes, I'll ask for a motion to approve as submitted.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Minutes will stand approved. First ordinance this evening will be the ordinance authorizing the sale of certain real property located in the city of Ashland and declaring an emergency.
Move for non-reading in full.
Second.
Thank you.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Now, of course, you all are aware of this particular item, but to give the public some background, this relates to a small strip of property that the city of Ashland owns behind the domestic violence safe haven on 12th Street. It's part of our street department property, but right now it is undeveloped and quite honestly, it's such a small piece of property being that it's less than a quarter of an acre. It has a portion of one of our gravel driveways across it so that we can access some of our buildings, but those folks at the domestic violence safe haven came to us and asked if we would consider selling it to them so that they can expand their facility because as you probably know, if you've visited that location, they're definitely landlocked. And they have, over the years, installed a, a storage facility, small temporary storage facility there to store some of the supplies and materials that they use in the shelter, and we allowed that with no, no hassle whatsoever. Well, now they're interested in maybe making some permanent structures in that area. So with that in mind, I am asking the council to consider selling that. And in order to sell it, we have to list it in the Ashland Times Gazette once a week for five consecutive weeks. And in that announcement that we put in the Times Gazette, we will set a time when we will open sealed bids. Of course, we can establish a minimum bid if we would like, and then ultimately, when that date rolls around, we'll open the bids. And if they're successful, they would be able to purchase it. I'm pretty confident that they would be successful because quite honestly, we will maintain that gravel easement. So you're not going to do much on that land because it's such a small piece of land and especially considering we're going to maintain our easement and access to that gravel driveway. It's not going to be usable for too many purposes. So with that, I ask the council to authorize the mayor to move forward with the process.
All right. Any discussion?
I would be in favor of no minimum bid on that.
It is unfortunate that we have the need for a domestic violence shelter, but since there is that need, I want to make sure we help them as much as we can.
Yeah. All right. Hearing no further discussion, is there a motion to approve on the first reading?
So move.
Second.
Thank you.
Workman.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
I'll move to suspend the rules for three separate readings, three separate days.
Second.
Thank you.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye. Motion to approve the ordinance?
Move for approval.
Second.
Thank you.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Ordinance 88-25.
Next, we have an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Finance to make the following transfers within the 2025 appropriations and declaring an emergency.
Move for non-reading in full.
Second.
Thank you.
Workman.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Good evening.
Evening, Mayor.
The ordinance before you allows us to transfer monies that you've already appropriated within the 2024, or 25, I'll get the right year, appropriations. It is needed in order to meet the different financial needs of those divisions listed in effort for them to be able to carry out the business of the city, hopefully for the rest of the year.
Very good.
It's hard to believe we're talking about the rest of 2025 already.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, Larry.
There's no further discussion, I'll ask for a motion to approve on the first reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye. I'll move to suspend the rules for three separate readings, three separate days.
Second.
Thank you.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Motion to approve the ordinance?
So move.
Second.
Thank you.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Ordinance 89-25.
Moving then to resolutions, we have a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the Ohio Department of Transportation by the city of Ashland for grants through the U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Transit Administration, and the state of Ohio for state fiscal year 2026 as authorized under federal transit laws and the state of Ohio laws, executing a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation upon project approval and declaring an emergency.
Move for non-reading in full.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
This one is routine. You often see us bring this to you. That's because when it comes to our public transit, we rely on funds through the state of Ohio and the federal transit program. And basically what you're doing, you described it. You're authorizing us to continue to file our applications for these funds. And of course, we use these funds not only to operate our transit, but also purchase equipment and vehicles at times for our transit and even soon, hopefully, to access funds for a new building. So we're just simply asking you to give us authorization to continue to apply for those funds.
Any discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve on the first reading?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
I'll move to suspend the rules for three separate readings, three separate days.
Second.
Thank you.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Motion to approve the resolution?
So move.
Second.
Thank you.
Workman.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Resolution 16-25.
And then we have a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor to apply for the Ohio Department of Transportation, to the Ohio Department of Transportation for transportation alternative program funding and declaring an emergency.
Move for non-reading in full.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
We often use the term "tap funding" when we talk about this particular program, but it stands for exactly what you said, transportation alternative program. Basically, this is a program through the Ohio Department of Transportation where from time to time, we can apply for funds for various projects related to alternative modes of transportation other than simple traffic and vehicles. And what we would like to do is apply for a grant to be able to install traffic calming crosswalks on Main Street. Now, you might ask yourself, what are traffic calming crosswalks? Well, that would be things like pavers in the place of everywhere you have a crosswalk on Main Street. Those have proven to slow traffic, but they also better delineate where there's a crosswalk. And I think you can probably imagine that as you'd be traveling down Main Street, it's going to become more obvious where you should be expecting people to be getting ready to cross the street. Another component that we would like to apply for is not only those traffic calming crosswalks, but also for bumped-out curb extensions. And if you don't know what those are, basically, if you can picture everywhere we have a crosswalk downtown, we would bump out the sidewalk far enough to get you out past the parking spot so that traffic coming will now be able to see you before you step out in front of the vehicle. You'll often see these in communities that have done beautification projects, you know, where maybe the brick pavers go out in front of the last parking spot before the crosswalk. And it will hopefully, not hopefully, it does make it, the pedestrians more visible. They can more, they can step out far enough safely with, and be seen before they start crossing the street. Does that make sense? That was kind of odd, but you, you've seen them in other communities. And so we would like to apply for a grant to hopefully get those funded. It's a very competitive program, and there's a very limited amount of money, but we think it's a pretty good project because it is, the big component is public safety. So we'll see what happens.
And from reading this resolution, it's 100% paid for?
Yes.
By the state?
Exactly. If we get it, there's a possibility that they could agree to pay you just a portion of it, but if that's the case, and it's a significant amount, we would likely move forward as long as we can find the funds in our own budget. Because it is something we want to do because we do know that even with the pedestrian crossing signs on the center of Main Street, still, you cross at your own risk because some traffic stops, sometimes traffic doesn't stop. And you do have to step so far out into the street just to see around the vehicles that are parallel parked. So this would slow down traffic and also make it easier for the pedestrians, safer for pedestrians to step out and look both ways before they cross the street.
Our downtown is always extremely busy.
It is now.
So sometimes it's even hard to see people.
Yes.
As they're walking out, so I think that's a great idea.
With those bump outs, eliminated any parking spaces?
No.
No.
Should not. Nope. Because they will be where there's a current crosswalk. So I think you've probably seen them in other places, haven't you?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
But it's called traffic calming.
Yes.
Interesting. But there is a need.
Yes.
For sure. It looks nice, too.
Oh, absolutely.
All right. With that, is there a motion to approve on the first reading?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
I'll move to suspend the rules for three separate readings, three separate days.
Second.
Thank you.
Workman.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Motion to approve the resolution?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lawson.
Miller.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Resolution 17-25.
How soon will we hear something on that?
I'm not sure when we would hear a response. It won't be this year, but...
Okay. We have no public hearing items this evening, no old business or new business unless council has something to bring forward. Hearing none, then we'll move right to Finance Directive's report.
Over the last few years, excuse me, we have been working to possibly refinance some of the city's debt. That this year was sped up a little bit because of some of the actions that were taken within the legislature to give the Budget Commission of the county a little more authority or responsibility, I guess maybe is a better word for it. In the next week or so, with the planning of the future improvements to the utilities, I believe that this body recently, most recently, passed a resolution to authorize or to apply for funding for some of those improvements. In an effort to shore up the balance sheet a little bit, we will see, hopefully, in the near future, some legislation to retire some of our current debt in an effort to eliminate those payments for the coming year so that it can be anticipated for the improvements to the utilities that we've got planned or in the planning stages, I guess, at this point. So I just really wanted to give you a heads up that that is coming. I will certainly forward you information of that so that keep all of you folks abreast of what's happening. But I believe it can be accomplished. Unfortunately, we had hoped to have had it done before. We had to make the annual payments on that debt, which comes due on December 1st. That didn't happen, so, but between now and the end of the year, we are going to be looking at retiring some of that existing debt so that we can look forward to the improvements that we're working on and being able to afford them.
Thank you, Larry.
Any questions or comments?
Sounds good.
Are you speaking mainly of the infrastructure utilities or the meters?
The infrastructure.
Okay.
The, the, the extensions of utilities, the improvements at the wastewater treatment plant. We've been very fortunate over the few years to accumulate slowly some funds in those retirement funds so that we could pay some of that off. Some of the, the one big one is the retention basin at the wastewater treatment plant. That has been in existence for about 15 years. And, and it's got another 15 years of going before it could be retired. And that's a pretty big number there. We really had thought that we would try to reorganize all of the debt, including the fire station, the second fire station. But that just unfortunately, we have to wait five years before we can refinance or call those bonds. And those are not old enough, if I can say that, in being able to do that. And the ladder truck is position 22, so that'll be a little bit, yeah. We'll continue to collect the funds to do that, but this other debt hopefully will be retired in anticipation of us moving forward with other programs.
Great. Thank you, Larry. Council comments. Mr. Lawson?
A couple of comments. I know we say it every year, but I continue to see people putting their leaves in the street. There is a section on East Liberty where at least two, maybe three homes have put their leaves so far out into the street that it is impeding traffic. So not only is it a hazard when those leaves get wet, it becomes slick. It also potentially can clog the storm drains and create problems. But now they're so far out in the street that cars are having to go out around them. And so it may be necessary for us to start sending letters to people, remove your leaves from the street because it's becoming a traffic hazard and it's becoming a danger. So again, please, don't put your leaves in the street. I also had a couple of people contact me about a dead deer that is on the eastbound lane of 42 between Mifflin and King Road. That may be within the city limits, but that is the responsibility of the state. And so we would hope the state does. It's been there for almost two weeks and it's becoming very unattractive, I guess I would say. And so just to remind people, I appreciate the comments and questions about it, but that is the responsibility of the state to be able to, to clean that up. And then thirdly, I just want to say, maybe in light of today's elections and so forth, I have noticed recently how the old adage, a rising tide lifts all boats. And as the city has continued to make improvements to our streets and make improvements to our infrastructure and make improvements to the services that the city provides, we're seeing that that is having a positive impact across the entire city. And so like we say, the rising tide lifts all boats. We're seeing, I think, marked improvement in the quality of life in the city of Ashland as is recognized in this magazine. So I just want to say, I appreciate the city services for the improvements that they're doing and helping us have an improved quality of life.
Definitely. And, and with that, we now know the source of that funding.
Yes.
And it was on your ballot today, so very good.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Angela?
Just want to take a moment to thank everybody that took their time to go vote. So it's a process that's important for everybody. The small elections versus the big ones, they're all important. So I appreciate everybody who either went today on voting day or did early voting. So however you voted, thank you.
Very good. Mr. Miller?
Dan, stole one of my thunders, but I'll go back to my standby. Watch your speeds as you travel around town. The other thing I wanted to mention is November 11th is Veterans Day. The Eagles, as the club, as they do every year, and the mayor's office is hosting the Veterans Day breakfast. So if you're a veteran, or you know a veteran, or have any connections with any veterans, please make sure... please make sure you invite them out. It's always a good event, and the council serves the food, so we don't make it, we just serve it. But it's a good event to honor those who've gone above and beyond and done their service, so that's it.
Very good, all right. Well, I just want to echo what Mrs. Woodward said. It is election day. We hope you all went out to vote, and we appreciate everyone who took part in the American political process, especially on a local level, so thank you. And Mayor, I'll turn it over to you.
Very good. The only thing that I would add is to the comment that Dennis made. We'll put up on the screen the details, but the mayor's Veterans Day breakfast takes place on November 11th. Start time is 7:30 a.m. in the morning, and it lasts until nine o'clock. We hope that you'll come out. I think last year, we had nearly 400 people, I believe, and we're very fortunate. We've, that breakfast has taken on a number of different versions in a number of different locations, but the Eagles Club has really got behind it, and now they are the ones that are preparing the food, and it is delicious, so you're welcome to come and join us that morning. Also, later in the day, we'll once again feature a movie at the Ashland Theater that'll be free to veterans, and I believe one guest, and I believe that includes free popcorn and maybe some other concessions. I'm not sure exactly what's included this year, but the movie that we'll be showing is Unbroken. So if you haven't seen that movie, it's a powerful true story about a gentleman who overcome tremendous obstacles and challenges in his lifetime, and it's very inspiring. So that'll take place on November 11th, and we do hope that you'll come out. Incidentally, all veterans, current, and I guess you're always a veteran, but active service members and veterans of past times are able to join us, and you are welcome to bring a guest, and they do not have to be a veteran. And so we'll provide you with a delicious breakfast. So thank you very much for that, and I would say too, thank you very much for all the support that you've shown us over the last several years. For me especially, I will say, this will be the rounding up the eighth year, which is hard to imagine. And in eight years, sometimes it seems like we haven't accomplished very much to me, and then other moments, I'll get a reality check and think, well, wait a second, there's a lot that has changed in the last eight years. But it has been an honor to certainly serve with this city council and to have the support of the public, because one of the reasons why we've been able to make such advancements is because we have the support of the people who live here and pay taxes. I made the comment to our department heads earlier this morning at a staff meeting that we are so blessed because we have the support of the public, we don't have to fight about every decision that we make. And that is why Ashland has moved forward at the pace that it's moved forward. And quite honestly, that is why we have been discovered by the outside as one of a great places to call home. And so we certainly thank all of you for your support, because without it, we would not have made the cover as one of Ohio's best five hometowns. So God bless all of you, and thank you for doing what you can do to make our community a better place. So with that...
All right.
Mayor, I did, the resolution about the transit kind of reminded me. Any update on the building?
Yes, we now have, we had to, let me think, what's the term? We sought qualifications from firms to see who would be best qualified to do the project, and I know who was selected, but I don't know if it's premature for me to announce, but it is a local contractor that has been determined to be the entity that is best qualified to do our project, and you know what? I'm trying to think if I'm allowed to announce that yet or not, but...
Next time.
It's a major construction company here in Ashland, and so the next step is we'll work with them to finalize the design and then start to move forward. Actually, I'll tell you what, the first step will be is to find out what the cost is going to be. Because as you know, we started the public transit building discussion now probably two to three years ago, and we've been waiting for our turn to be funded. And obviously, the cost of what it might have been to build that building three years ago will likely be different than what it is in 2026 and 2027. So that'll be the first thing we'll be anxious to see is what the new estimate is for the construction cost. You know, while we're in that corridor, I might as well add that we're planning a ribbon cutting, I'm sorry, I, hopefully soon that's the case, a groundbreaking for the new hotel at the Pump House District. And I believe that'll take place on November 19th in the afternoon. We haven't finalized the time just yet, we have been meeting with the developer, but everyone is excited to move forward with that project. So November 19th in the afternoon, you should anticipate a groundbreaking for the renovation and new addition they hope to build at the Pump House Office Building.
Wonderful.
So all the pieces are moving forward.
Great. All right, thank you, Mayor. With that, we'll move right to comments and questions from our audience. If anyone has anything, please step up to the podium, and you're welcome to address council. Seeing no one then, before we...
They were installing the lights at her field today, so all the way from the barn up to the entrance of the pavilion. It was pretty much finished.
Wow, great.
Oh.
A new system of doing it, and it's very effective.
Now, are you talking about Christmas lights?
Yes.
All right, yes.
Candy Cane Trail. Right now, we're anticipating that the kickoff and grand opening will be on the Saturday after Thanksgiving. And so that's why you're starting to see the installation take place. This year, we plan to exceed our record that was set last year of 776 trees. We're going to add a significant number of new elements, and so it should be a new experience for everyone. Thank you to the friends at Grandpa's Cheese Barn.
So...
And the Ashland County Park District, because they're also adding elements this year.
If there's any question, you can see this from space.
Yes.
I've been told, anyway. So, all right. With that then, before we adjourn, I want to thank Pastor George Swain for providing our invocation again tonight. Thank you, George. And yeah, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you all for coming.